Half a day and good morning and welcome again to the Guam Congress Building. This is a continuation of the hearing that was begun on November 1st, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. and it lasted until 2:00 p.m., which was six hours, but we were unable to include everyone who had come to testify. So this again is a bill, a hearing on Bill Number 184-37-COR introduced by the Committee on Rules by request of Imega Hagan Guahan, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. It's an act to authorize the Guam Incestral Lands Commission to sell or lease lots 2453, 2453-1, 2454, 2455, 2457, and 2457-1, municipality of Baragada, to the government of Guam at fair market value for use as the site of a new medical complex. The bill was introduced on October 11th. This is not a hearing on the other bill that was introduced to cite the new medical, the hospital in Tamooning. That bill will be heard on November 20th. We also had a previous oversight hearing on Ipau Point, a follow-up on that. So this is distinct. This is for Bill 184-37. And this is subsequent to passage by the legislature in 2021 of a law which authorized the financing, design, construction, and of a new hospital. That was in October 2021, two years ago. So again, because we are short on time this morning, we're going to have to end at 9:00 a.m. I'm looking for another date to continue to have additional hearings. I do want to have additional discussions with the Department of Land Management and the Guam Incestral Lands Commission, who were here at the last hearing, but we were not able to get in depth with them. So hopefully, and so we will commence where we left off and receive testimony. At that time, signed up was Joe Mafness and Director Art San Augustine, and then Lily and Paris Pasadas, Irene Prer, Kenneth Chargaloff, David Orapa, Dan Mendiola, Mark Mirror, and Joseph Augustine from the Government of Guam's Veteran Affairs Office, and Raymond Paris, and former Senator George Bamba. All right, so here today, I think you are in order of your appearance here this morning, so you can begin, Mr. Chargaloff, please. Oh, I'm sorry, let me just recognize that my colleagues with me this morning are Senator Chris Barnett and Senator Tom Fisher. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning, Senator Chris Barnett and Senator Fisher. Honorable senators, I'll make this mine very brief. I have several things I want to discuss with you, but because we are limited with time, I will be very conscientious about the other speakers' time. I submit my written testimony in strong support of Bill 184-37 to build the new Guam Memorial Hospital in Mangilo, the central part of Guam. My name is Kenneth P. Chargaloff, originally from Inalahan and now reside in Winward Hills, Jolnia. I come here to appeal to the wisdom of this body, to respectfully consider the lives of the people who live in the southern area. We lived throughout our lifetime with many challenges, living far from downtown Hagatnia, Tamooning, Tumon, Dedidu, and Jigu, where most businesses are, financial institutions, government agencies, hospitals, clinics, shopping centers, and restaurants. Yet, we embrace the wisdom of our past government leaders and are equally grateful of the vision of our past entrepreneurs. As one who lives in the south, we must drive through winding roads, poor road conditions, steep and rolling hills, two-lane traffic, endure traffic congestion in downtown Hagatnia and Tamooning, and an hour's drive to the current Guam Memorial Hospital. I can briefly describe that the distance between my home and the hospital leads to longer travel time, and delays in reaching the hospital can be critical when we need immediate medical attention. Poor road conditions combined with heavy traffic congestion, especially during peak hours, impede emergency services, timely arrival that exacerbate the overall travel time. The description above of one's hardship is edged from a personal experience. I have been a heart patient since birth, and I regularly see my cardiologist and primary doctor. There were multiple times when I felt an urgent need to seek medical, emergency medical care, but it was a significant struggle to transport myself, or even via ambulance, to the current GMH. On November 3rd, an example, November 3rd, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. on the day of the senatorial and mayoral election, I received a call from my brother that my oldest sister, who lived in Inalahan, had trouble breathing. We called 911 and requested an ambulance to transport my sister to GMH. I arrived at my sister's house in less than 10 minutes. No ambulance was in sight. She peacefully passed away minutes later. Subsequently, the fire truck arrived, but it was already too late. It was later told by a fireman that there was no ambulance available in Inalahan, whom Martin, Talfofu, or Hogat at the moment. Eventually, an ambulance arrived in just over an hour or so. Today, I ask you to place yourselves in our shoes. I come to you with an impassioned plea and hear the cries of the south and feel our pains, our hurts, our troubles, our agonies. Senator Telutai Tagui, a proud daughter of Inalahan, understands our pains and our hardships of the distance. I must equally believe that our esteemed Senator Chris Barnett feels our pains as well as he once lived in Inalahan for a few years. Now, we have the opportunity, senators, we have the opportunity to select a more centralized area to build the Guam Memorial Hospital Medical Complex and to service to benefit all of Guam. For the first time in our history, we would have increased response time to receive medical services, usually taking 45 minutes to an hour drive from southern Guam to GMH. Imagine if our government leaders were to propose and be firm in their decision to build the new GMH in Dundan, Inalahan, and we dismiss the hardship, travel time, and timely medical and emergency care for people who live in the northern, central, and western Guam. This is plainly unacceptable. I was told by the speaker this past Wednesday that this body has to weigh between 20 million to improve the infrastructure in Oka Point, or 100 million to build the infrastructure in Mangilo. No amount of, can equal one life of a human being. Life is priceless and irreplaceable. I am highly encouraged that our governor has the vision to propose the new GMH complex to be built in Mangilo to benefit all of Guam. She understands our pains and endeavors to give us hope. Honorable senators, I pray you share the same vision as the governor and understand our pains. Give us hope and respond to the cries of our heart as southerners. We truly rely on your empathetic and Christian heart. Senators, it requires responsible leadership for thoughtful planning and consideration to care for the lives of all. Our brothers and sisters who live in the north, central, and western Guam have the minimum benefit of seeking acute care at GRMC or Guam Naval Hospital at a moment's need. Senators, our lives reside in this body's caring, conscientious, and responsible hands. A reasonable government leader will thoughtfully and responsibly support the new medical campus to be built at a centralized location to benefit the entire Guam, especially those of us residing from afar. The southern people, lives matter too. Thank you for your time and your favorable consideration is highly sought. If I have time, I really would like to discuss several other items that is consistent with my written testimony this morning, written and oral testimony. Thank you, Senator.
Situs Massey, Mr. Chargaloff. Mr. Joe Mafness.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning, Senator Barnett, Senator Fisher. My name is Joseph Mafness. I'm a veteran of 34 years of service. I have retired from the United States Army. I came here today to testify in support of Bill 184-37. It is time that we build a new hospital. We can't wait any longer. All of you must come to an understanding, senators, governors, and other officials, to come up with a solution in building a new hospital. I am here as a veteran to support the governor and the lieutenant governor in building a VA clinic. This VA clinic will service veteran concern that has been a problem for years. You heard on Wednesday, some of the veterans that are here testified emotionally, and why? Because they have been neglected for years. You heard doctors that are against building a new hospital up there. Why? They don't understand the feeling of the veterans. We are out there, I've been in full conflict, and do they ever hear us complain? No, we will never complain, but we are fighting for our rights as a veterans. I hate to say this when they say, "Thank you for your service." After serving so many years, that's all I get is, "Thank you for my service"? What other avenue do I need? I need a new VA clinic. With this VA clinic, it will also service a neighboring island such as the CNMI, Palau, Micronesian Island, and others. I heard from people that are against the location of the new hospital, especially some doctors. My question is, is it for the doctors' benefit or for the people's benefit and the veterans? I say it's for the people and the patient veterans themselves. Madam Speaker, the governor and the lieutenant governor, in my opinion, is the only governor that I can remember fighting for veterans' benefit. They have met with officials in the mainland such as the Veterans Office, especially building a new hospital, a VA clinic. No past governor has done this and put that in the agenda as to support our veterans. We have about 25,000 veterans on the island, and a lot of them are crying for help. So you can see why we veterans need help, and this governor and lieutenant governor will provide the help by fighting with the VA administration in DC. With the new medical complex and a VA clinic, this will solve a lot of the VA problems, to mention a few: medical care facility, clinic with pharmacy, medical service enhancement, stability of medical doctors, mental and health, and suicide prevention. With the new hospital complex, we VA clinic, will solve some of the hardship the veteran family example, for example, referring for off-island treatment. This is hardship for the family. The new VA clinic will fully furnish equipment, medical specialists, and so forth. On a side note, two weeks ago, I just came back from visiting my two sons who I haven't seen for 15 years. Both them are in the service. Both them were deployed four times, and they are now in Texas. The reason why I'm saying this, because when I was down there, I met three of these veterans that are appealing for Guam to have a VA clinic. They're there for medical reasons, and they can't come back because they don't have the facilities to take care of these veterans. They want to come back, and they told me that as soon as they get their treatment, they will return, but they can't, and the families are suffering over there. Why? If we have this facility shared, probably this will not happen. Senators, I urge each and every one of you to consider this Bill 184 and pass to build a new medical complex that along with the veterans clinic as well. Let us not dream about, because it won't happen. As a veteran, we fight. Help us, veterans, it's time. Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the Guam Legislature.
Situs Massey, Mr. Mafness. Director San Augustine.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and Senator Barnett and Senator Fisher. Good morning and half a day. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 184-37. The Act to Authorize the Guam Incestral Lands Commission to Sell or Lease Lots 2453, 2453-1, 2454, 2455, 2457, and 2457-1, municipality of Baragada, to the government of Guam at fair market value for use as a site of a new medical complex. As the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, it is imperative for me to emphasize the critical need for a medical complex. Repairing the current hospital is a temporary solution. It would only serve as a Band-Aid to a much larger issue. The structural deficiencies, the outdated technology, and spatial limitations of the current facility severely hamper our capacity to meet the healthcare needs of our community. A medical complex offers a plethora of advantages, from modern infrastructure to updated medical equipment, increased spatial capacity, and enhanced specialized care. Moreover, the opportunity to incorporate a veterans clinic and a dedicated building for the Department of Public Health and Social Services within this new footprint will provide a more comprehensive and efficient healthcare system for our community. Today, DPHS offices are located among several locations, causing challenges with service accessibility and public health coordination. The proximity to the hospital will improve inter-agency connectivity and go a long way to creating better healthcare outcomes for our beneficiaries, which is a new mission for the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. Additionally, with an assisted living facility envisioned at the planned medical complex, we will help address a severe gap in services for our manamko, who deserve to live with dignity in the sunset of their lives. Having the government's public health and social services co-located with the island's only public hospital will also help the government save resources, including the cost of rent for many, for the many offices of DPHSS. The medical complex facility will provide sufficient parking and space to effectively serve our clients with room to expand. This medical complex is a win for all of our residents, and the measure should be acted upon promptly as a measure of good public policy. It is not cost-effective to continually repair an outdated facility, which still falls short of meeting modern healthcare standards, impales in comparison to the long-term benefits a medical complex would provide. Building a medical complex not only ensures better healthcare delivery, but also enhances the continuity of care with mental health, medical, public health, and veteran services on a single site, enabling us to meet the demands of a growing and diverse population and conveniently serve our community, especially our underserved. I cannot overemphasize this important point. The convenience and standard of care of a medical complex will allow many families that public health serves to seek treatment and care in Guam with the support of family. It is for these reasons that I firmly advocate for the allocation of resources towards the construction of a medical complex, including the means to properly acquire the required parcels of land as Bill 184-37 provides. It is a most prudent and beneficial course of action for our community's health and well-being. I thank you for the consideration of this crucial matter, but I would also like to offer an oral opportunity, I would like to begin an oral opportunity just to provide some information to the committee. I know that there are two physicians, and they talked about public health, and that we perhaps are not best suited to that medical complex, and I take exception to that simply for this. Over 20 years, public health and social services and to this day does not have its official site. We have our offices spread out throughout Guam, and not because we designed it that way. It was out of necessity and need. For over 20 years, the Division of Senior Citizens alone has never been in the central public health facility. There just wasn't enough space. There hasn't been. We have 11 offices that we rent, and we have about 21 programs, so over 20 programs in these different offices, and they're spread throughout the island, and I've shared this before even in the budget hearing. So really, it's imperative that we invest not just in the medical complex of GMHA, but also for public health and social services. When you go back and you look at a holistic perspective of care, it's not just the medical component that is critical. It's when the patient leaves and public health and social services could be a real arm in that effort to ensure there is care. Our case managers, our social workers work with these families on a more regular basis, and so they can continue to help with that home case, that home care, that coordination that is needed. When you look at the Matrix Report, I know there's reference to a clinic and there's reference to a center. I want to be very clear, we're not opening a new community health center at this site. We do provide some degree of clinic, as we did in central public health, but if you go to page 1-5 of Chapter 1 of the Matrix Report of Projectal Review, the second entry is Public Health Center, and there you'll find a list of the different divisions and the office-based requirements, and included in that but not listed will be the Division of Children's Wellness. This report was done before DCW came in, and I looked at this report because it says a public health center, and I know there's a clinic, like I said, but it's really the immunization program, it's our TV screening, and so it's not a community health center. We have two, and we will continue to work on those two centers to improve and provide even more services. It's always been our mission to do that, and we will continue to do that. But I just wanted to provide clarification, excuse me, because there is a sense that we might be opening a third health center, and we are not opening a third health center. Within the public health center will rest the offices of senior citizens, environmental health, the Division of Public Health, General Administration, public welfare, and children's wellness. So our six divisions will be housed in there. We always talk about a call center, what we're working on that, and in our pick, in our vision of this, we will also have a call center in this location. So if a person is in the hospital, they could be, use a transitional care model that we could use, so that we work with the hospital's social work team very closely and assist with that transition and that discharge planning. The assisted living facility is long overdue, and it's one of those areas of need, and many of us have talked about it. We are just starting to have conversations on long-term care or long-term services and support, or even transitional care models. So with that, I just wanted to offer that additional information, that public health hasn't had an office, a home, where all its offices could be located, co-located, so we could operate more efficiently and more effectively. If we have six areas that require payment, we need six cashers, as opposed to having a primary cashier booth, like some other agencies do. So thank you for the time, and I appreciate your support, and really ask that you consider this and move very promptly on it. Every day is a day that we can capitalize on building our new medical complex, inclusive of a home for public health and social services, which is long overdue, and it is deserving for the community of Guam to have a place, a central location where they can seek services. Thank you very much for your time, Madam Speaker and Senators. Situs Massey.
Thank you, Director San Augustine. Mr. Mirror, oh, yeah, Mr. Mirror.
Thank you, Speaker, and thank you, Senators, and our partners up there. I'm a resident of Mangilo for, for my, pretty long, I was raised there. I see Mangilo from a two-lane to a five-lane. There's something wrong to have a dual for healthcare in the village of Mangilo. My speech would be pretty short. It's not about doctors come and go. We live here, I live here, people live here. Look at the point of view. Do you want a first-class health clinic? That's the question I want to ask. That's all I ask for. Thank you for your time, Senators, and that's all I have to say.
Situs Massey, Mr. Mirror. Director San Augustine as well.
Madam Speaker, good morning. Senator Barnett and Senator Fisher, good morning. My name is Joseph Augustine. I am a resident of Guam and the Director for the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs. This morning, I am testifying in the capacity as a resident of Guam and as a representative for the Guam Veterans Affairs Office under the government of Guam, and also as a retired Marine veteran of 30 years. I am here to testify with regards to the VA clinic, with regards to the challenges that our veterans are facing daily with their family. But before I do that, I want to address the complex, Bill 184, that we're actually here for this morning. I have four kids. I brought them all to Guam. None of them lived here in Guam, except myself and my wife. And of course, they got married, they joined the service and move on to do better, bigger things with their lives. As we speak, my oldest son is in the Air Force, is within the vicinity of the hotspots as we speak. My son-in-law that's married to my daughter is prepping to take off to one of those hotspots as well, a Marine. My dear Senators, my appearance today is to humbly ask you to support and consider the passing of Bill 184. Your passing of this bill unanimously by all 15 senators, I can assure you, is the right thing to do for the people of Guam. I expect that there will be difficult questions during this hearing, but I ask of you all to be the solution. In this day and age, we must strive to modernize our medical facilities and health system for the sake of our children and their children. Let's not fail them. Let's not leave this issue to our children to resolve because it will be too late. When I joined the military in 1979, I have never gone to Guam Memorial Hospital. I joined when I was 18. Until my life, I've never gone through there. I wasn't sure whether that's where I was born, because in 1960, you know, some of our parents deliver at home. But what I want to say is, we all know that the Guam Memorial Hospital is in its final fate. We need to build a new one, and Bill 184 is the vehicle to make that happen up at the I've heard, and I've been shared stories by many of my friends, relatives, and cousins, people very near, dear to my heart with regards to the kind of service that they get over at Guam Memorial Hospital, where some of our smarter people mentioned that in order to have a complex, you have to have the patients. When these people share stories to me that their loved ones have gone into the emergency room, and for some reason ended up being placed on the hallways because there's no rooms to be placed, that's an indicator that that's an indicator that we have more than enough patients. I've heard of stories and shared stories of their loved ones being just left there to pass on because there's no specialty treatment. There's no specialized, modernized individuals and equipment to care for their ailment. And it's a very heartfelt, hard feeling to know that instead of being placed in a room to pass away or be dealt with as a patient peacefully, you're placed on the hallway. And this happened to my mom. She hardly go to the hospital. She was one of those chomoral upbringing that believes in our local medicine, but we only could do so much. And I will tell you, the only time she probably went to the hospital was when she had to deliver babies, my younger siblings probably. But with that, she hardly, and with those very few cases that she had to go, she was placed on the hallway. And I mind you, we live on a farm. She grew up in a hardship life. She grew up during the Japanese occupation. She was one that was used as a slave here in Guam. So why do we continue to make that happen? And I say that we grew up, she grew up as a farmer, wasn't so smart. She had to leave school at first grade because she had to care for the parents and the siblings because she was the oldest. But to be placed on a hallway, she ended up asking me, "Boy, take me home to the ranch", and passed away a week later. And that's not the place to pass away, and that's not a place where care is being provided. It's the hospital. And there's many others, and many others worse than that. Are we doing better? Yeah, we're doing better. I've had, and I'll just say this, I just lost my sister August, past August, over at GMH, enrolled to GMH. She went through a kidney transplant in Hawaii. It took her like eight years to get a kidney transplant, and within one year after the plant, it's gone because we don't have the specialty here in Guam. She had an appointment during Typhoon Maewar, and after that, she wasn't able to make the appointment because there was no power. But the problem here is while we're doing a lot of good things at the hospital, and that hospital was clean when I went there to visit her several times. The staff did everything they could, but there was also a doctor who was taking care of her that said, if she was in the States, she would have been taken care of. There's nothing else we could do here. So we need a new hospital. Build the hospitals, and it's up to the doctors whether they're going to come there and service the patients or not. But I ask you all, Senators, to work with the administration to build this hospital because we need it. And my sister was age 58, and she's worked more than 20-some years up at Guam Revenue and Tax. So why am I here? My kids are in the States. Because when I joined the military, I told my siblings and my friends, I'm going to come back to Guam, and I'm going to try to help whatever way I could. And I'm trying. And I hope that you all are with me. Help the people out. Help the community out. Help the governor, and let's move this project forward. So I mentioned that I'm the Director for the Guam Veterans Affairs Office. The testimony from the doctors here the other day is an insult to the veterans. The governor has been communicating with the upper-level folks in DC, the VA leadership. I just came back from Brooklyn. I'm a member of the National State of Directors of Veterans Affairs. And I went to that conference to fight for a better health system and better care for our veterans here on Guam. Our veterans out in the other territories, our veterans out in the other islands, Saipan, Rota, Tinian, F.S.M., Palau. And for somebody to stand here or sit here and say it cannot be done is an insult by the governor's efforts and my efforts to convince the smarter, upper people that we do need a better healthcare in Guam. And the problem we have is we give up so easily. Senators, just to let you all know, I mentioned that I'm a 30-year veteran. I'm not getting any type of disabled compensation. All it is is my retirement, my military retirement, and thank God. Because for 30 years that I've served, and yes, I've been in the hotspots. I was 12 years during Desert Shield, 12 months Desert Shield Desert Storm. And you know the sad part of that, when you hear these other veterans of their challenges? I don't want to share mine with you all because I don't even share it with my wife because it's too painful. The 12 months that I was deployed in that hotspot, I only called my wife once because it's too painful for me to share once. Ask her, and she was very, very disappointed that I didn't call her. But there's a reason. Because I had a mission to do. And it's me. And it's not because I don't love them, it's because I love everybody that I'm out there defending for. So for someone to say it cannot be done, the governor is misleading. It's a bunch of crackerjack. And don't undermine the governor, don't undermine my efforts because I am one of the leading people within our veterans community here in Guam that will continue to fight for our veterans, and I will not stop. I don't talk much. But when you do injustice to the veterans, shame on you. And if your veterans do, shame on you because we need to come together and fight for the needs of our veterans. And it's still happening now where veterans will call me and tell me that they canceled their flight because they cannot be accompanied by their loved ones to their referral in the States or in Hawaii. As they age, they do not get better, so it's hard for them to mobilize. So what do they do there? They cancel that appointment. But if that service was here in Guam, we don't need to worry about it. Is it going to take 60 years? 60 years because people stop it. People do not support it. Well, let's be positive and stop being negative because enough negative happens here. I'll tell you, the Community-Based Outreach Clinic is doing a lot of good things. The Naval Hospital is doing a lot of good things, but the Naval Hospital is there for the purpose of the active-duty personnel. Yeah, I could go there as a retiree. I went there once. But the Community-Based Outreach Clinic could only do so much. Why do we have to send our people off island for medical care? And mind you, I'll say this. There are three other states in the State of Directors Conference that fought for Guam, that went up there and said, "Build a complex, build a larger facility for the people of Guam", because they fought like we did. So for someone to say this cannot be done, it could be done, and we're going to fight to get it done. We're not going in with empty promises. We're going in to make this happen. And the only way it could happen is stop being negative and be positive. Because we got people, and I'll tell you this, we got, and I'm one of them. There's times where I don't want to go because it's not there. The service is not there. So if it's not there, they won't go. If we're saying that we don't have enough patients here in Guam, yeah, we don't because we're sending them off island. Just go up to the airport in the morning and ask people, a passenger where they're going. "Oh, I got a referral in LA or a referral in Hawaii." Why? And that's why they're not here, because they're being referred. But that comment from the doctor, it's an insult. And I did ask some of my battle buddies to be here that I received service from that doctor. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to mention what their issue was because I wanted them to be here. Then that experienced it, that the service was not what they expected it to be. I mentioned that Seabuck is doing a good job. And Mr. Kasafka was here yesterday testifying when he mentioned he's got the lowest and the highest. There's nothing in between. He farms. I farm too. And that's what's keeping me at bay to be the person I am. Because when I went for help up at the Community-Based Outreach Clinic for what you probably could detect, the first question was, why can you adapt and overcome? Adapt and overcome means when it's rough, overcome and continue your mission. I'm now a veteran, a civilian. I cannot adapt and overcome to an individual doing something wrong. Why can the individual that's doing something wrong adapt and overcome and be like me, do the right thing? And I took that. I did adapt and overcome a little bit just to try it. I live up on Swamp Road. I was the one mowing and cleaning that road. When they said, when they told me adapt and overcome, visit Swamp Road now. Because when I let it out of control, there's all kinds of violations happening up there. Visit Swamp Road. And that's what happened because I adapt and overcome. And I've been wanting for quite some time to get my machine, my own machine, to go out there and help my beloved community, remove all those eyesore problems and people that are causing it away from there. I adapt and overcome, and I'm not going to adapt and overcome to let the wrong, for me to become the wrong. And they told me the alternative will be to give me meds so I could be a zombie like everybody. Why refuse to do that? Senators, I was brought up the right way. My training and my skills in the military is the right way. When you see me or hear me going off, it's because I need to be heard. And you all know me when I talk, it's pretty mellow. But I just mind the doctors and those that are undermining what I'm trying to do for our veterans and what the governor and this government, which is their obligation is to find better ways for medical facilities and medical care for the people, to undermine it is shame on them. And Senators, if people tell you that if you don't make the right decision, comes November, you'll be out of the seat, don't let that happen. Make the right decision and be behind the project for the next 10 years until it's built and then leave. Because when you leave and somebody else comes in, it's going to be a new vision again. So I'm doing this. I'm doing this because I promised myself and my family that I'll come back and do something for Guam. I'm doing this because I'm a veteran and I'm doing it for the veterans. I'm doing this because I'm a Marine, and I know it's my obligation as a resident of Guam to be part of the solution, not the problem. And I hope all of you all play in there too, to be part of the solution and not the problem. With that said, Senators, Madam Speaker, I thank you for your time.
Sisus Massey, Director San Augustine. We also welcome any information that you might have. We've already asked other entities, but if you have any information for the legislature regarding VA, VA facilities, or what they are looking at doing on Guam, please, please send it our way. We'd like to see that as well. Director, CEO Lillian Pasadas of GMH. We have about 10 minutes left. You still like to proceed?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I'd like to. Thank you very much. Buenas en half a day, Speaker Theresa Lai, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Tom Fisher. Good morning and thank you for this opportunity to testify on Bill 184-37. My name is Lillian Perez-Pasadas. I am the hospital administrator of our one and only public hospital, GMHA. As a registered nurse with over 40 years of experience collectively, I'm here in person to express my unequivocal support for Bill 184-37 in hopes that it will be favorably passed by this legislative leadership. Given the extensive clinical, academic, and administrative nursing experience, I speak with confidence and a firm conviction that the proposed site in Bill number 184-37 will improve access to the hospital as well as to the other healthcare facilities that will be co-located in this futuristic, innovative, and state-of-the-art medical complex. As I previously and publicly articulated in my statement, which was quoted and reiterated by yourself, Speaker Lai, in your opening remarks on the October 26 hearing on the building of the new hospital at Ipap Point, yes, it is my duty and obligation to speak up for and on behalf of the public who look to us and trust us in our official capacities to ensure healthcare is equitably accessible and available for everyone and not just for the community, medical community. As Mr. San Augustine mentioned, we are part of the solution. So let's work together to make that happen. From my perspectives, building the new hospital and the medical campus at Eda Agaga in Baragata Manilo is in the best interest for all of the people of Guam, especially for the residents in the south. It is most advantageous and beneficial location for the residents of Guam. Having the other healthcare facilities such as DPHS and Guam Behavioral Health co-located in one medical complex will improve the continuity and follow-up care. A statement made on Wednesday's hearing that there is no history of interactions between public health and the hospital, that is absolutely untrue and incorrect. Public Health and GMHA have and are continuously in collaboration and communication, most especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. And we continue to do so because many of the patients that are hospitalized are also clients of both public health and behavioral health. Many patients admitted to the hospital are public health clients. Thus, interactions between the two agencies occur on a daily and regular basis. And likewise with public, the behavioral health. Many individuals who enter our GMHA ER for acute and or chronic medical conditions have underlying behavioral and mental health conditions and vice versa. As part of the Build the New Hospital, New Medical Campus Task Force that was established by Governor Leon Guerrero in July 2020, we at GMH also launched an internal task force to begin crafting a conceptual design of how we envision the new hospital facility and the medical campus, what we needed to ensure we factored in in terms of hospital codes and standards. At that time, we also incorporated a section that will address the needs of the estimated 25,000 local veterans who express their concerns and issues with regards to access to healthcare services, particularly with inpatient hospitalization, medication prescription, and PTSD services and support. It is very evident that we need to ensure the healthcare needs and services for our veterans who risk their lives to fight for our freedom that we all enjoy. Therefore, it is on us now to fight for them and give them the healthcare services and support they deserve. Let us do our part to build this new hospital and the medical campus that will be centrally accessible and available to our veterans. When these veterans are admitted to the Naval Hospital and are in need of hemodialysis treatment, they get transferred and transported to GMHA for inpatient dialysis. Thus, all the more evidence for us to include a veterans-inpatient and outpatient unit at the new medical campus. And contrary to what was mentioned at Wednesday's meeting hearing, meeting hearing, we accept and we admit veterans at GMHA under the TRICARE-TiWESK plan. Building the new hospital and the medical campus complex in a central location is the best site to meet the healthcare needs of the people of Guam. As a homegrown resident of Jonah, I also speak on behalf of my Jonah families, friends, and relatives, as well as those who live in the southern villages. The proposed Eda Agaga site is the right site. In terms of statement made that the building of the new hospital at Ipap Point is more accessible for the physicians, especially with time when dealing with life and death, I say the same for the people who live in the South, as pointed out by the two mayors, Marissa Mayor Ernie Chagulov and Inalaha Mayor Tony Chagulov. Time is absolutely a major factor. If the concern is when laboring familial patient needs the OB-GYN doctor to get to the LND right away, we have, and we continue to have a room in the Labor and Delivery Unit for the OB-GYN doctor or nurse-midwife to stay in the hospital on premise so that if the nurses need the doctor or the midwife ASAP, the physician or midwife is already on-site. The same goes for the internal medicine hospitalists. We have a room for them when they are on call during the night. So there is always availability of these professionals. We're not asking or telling the medical clinics, the doctors, and the medical community to move or relocate their clinics or their practice, but we ask and encourage them to be open-minded, to work with us, and find creative solutions for the greater good of our island. To say that it's impossible to recruit doctors, specialty doctors, psychiatrists, nurses, and other highlight health professionals is so defeating and negative. Let's not cut ourselves short. Let's, yes, it's very challenging, but not impossible. It's an ongoing activity endeavor to recruit and retain healthcare professionals, but that is our responsibility, to continue finding creative and innovative strategies to recruit and retain our workforce, as well as strategies to grow and train our talented, up-and-coming young people. And we have had successes recruiting doctors. We were able to bring in the cardiologists that are able to do now cardiac surgeries, angiogram, and even stents and base makers. So there are successes, and we will continue to then recruit as aggressively as we can. We've converted some of those travel nurses, 15 of them, to be employed under an employment contract. So there are ways, there are ways to recruit and retain these individuals. Some people, when they come here, they like it here in Guam. So let's make it positive and welcoming for them so that we can then really keep them practicing here at Guam. There are also individuals who enter in the later years and are seeking a new career, a new profession, a second career. So let's focus on that population also. As leaders, we have a duty and obligation to have and instill hope for our children, our grandchildren, the great-grandchildren, and generations to come. We need to do our part to build, to improve, to invest, and shape the future of our island's healthcare system. To say and think it's a waste of money, a waste of time, is so hopeless and pessimistic, a negative, as Mr. San Augustine pointed out. Let's be positive. Let's be constructive. We need to change this mindset of being negative and being hopeless and pessimistic. Thank you, Speaker Lai, and senators, for giving us this opportunity to share our perspectives and to support this Bill number 184-37. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, CEO Pasadas. All right, that's going to have to conclude this hearing because of time. And I'm trying to find another time to continue because I do want to have a more in-depth conversation, and we are waiting for documents from the hospital and other entities regarding the VA facility, so more details. And so, but for now, this is going to conclude the hearing on this bill for today that was continued from November 1. So Sisus Massey again to all of you for your testimony and for coming out this early in the morning. Sisus Massey. This hearing is adjourned.